All right. Okay, welcome back. We just had a work session on mental health. And if you're interested in the different initiatives in mental health for the Boulder Valley School District, we're going to be putting them online in case you missed that part. So calling to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, October 12th. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Markwes.
Here.
Myers.
I didn't hear you.
Myers.
I see you.
I see you. Are you muted?
I don't think she can hear. I don't. She might have to turn her audio on.
Yeah, she's definitely not muted.
Will Textor. Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
I will accept Myers' presence by visual.
Okay. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome and thank you for joining us. The mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives.
I'm not hearing anything on my computer.
Okay. And if someone wants to send Donna a text to maybe put it on, that'd be great. Okay. And also, just a reminder, we celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday. So, just for all those people in the community who sponsored activities, to recognize the diversity in our community, a big thank you from all of us. And the other thing is, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, the League of Women Voters, Impact on Education, and the District Parents Council are hosting a school board candidate forum. This is a great opportunity to learn about all the people who've stepped up to run in the, to fill the open seats that we have coming up. That is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. And you can go to the Impact on Education webpage to see how to listen to it. It's going to be virtual. In addition, Impact now has a link that says, "Submit a question here." So if you're interested in submitting a question for the candidates, please do so. So, at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. By Cathy, and second by Kitty. And Laura, would you please call the vote on the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Markwes.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Markwes, board members. A few things to highlight this evening. And so I believe that Randy's bringing up a few slides. Maybe that's not happening. So, October, as you may know, board members, is National Principals Month. And so, the slides are going to be pictures of our awesome principals. You can just envision them up there doing amazing things. You know, principals are so, so important to, not only our schools and their success, but the, but the leadership and the achievement that we, we are seeking for, from our students. Principals play a key, integral role. Board members, as you recall, I spent eight years as a high school principal, some of the fondest years that I've ever had as an educator. Incredibly difficult, complicated job, especially during this pandemic. And so, I want to make sure that we recognize all of our principals, let our community know, this is National Principal Appreciation Month. So, thank your principal. If you haven't had a chance to thank them, send them an email, card. They're just doing incredible work. And if we get these slides up, you'll be able to see, see some, some of the, some of the wonderful principals we have here in BVSD. Oh, see, there we go. All right. It was worth the wait. So, these are many of our high school principals. Then you could keep on going.
Yeah, I think the problem is the dial-in is not good.
Okay, wonderful. So, from high school to middle school, K-8, and elementary school, we just have incredibly dedicated leaders here in the Boulder Valley School District, just very thankful. So, I invite our community to, to join us in celebrating them this month. This week, Hispanic Heritage Month is wrapping up. We had lots of great cultural celebrations across the district. Up here on the screen, on the top right photo, was a Monarch Hispanic Heritage Night, where they did some Zumba lessons and home-cooked food for families. We have books displays in school libraries, as shown in several of our photos, and then an ebook collection on Sora app, where staff and students had access to more electronic and audiobooks. And so, I just want to thank our schools and community for helping us celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And then finally, final slide, there we go. On October 6th, I had the privilege to celebrate Walk to School Day along with many of our community. We had 27 celebrations across the district. We think that's the most in the state of Colorado, with banner signings. I know I was at Monarch K-8 as kids walked to school. There was a music out there, DJs cheering them, and they were able to sign some banners, healthy snacks, raffles. We did several walking school buses, where, and bicycle trains at several of our schools. Mesa did an after-school bike rodeo. We gave out bike lights, stickers. And then, in three of our schools, we did something neat called a Ride in Stride, where the bus riders were dropped off a few blocks from school so they could walk to school and participate. And 17 of our schools also collected used shoes that are going to be diverted from landfills via partnership with EcoCycle. So, just three, I think, really neat events that happened over the past couple of weeks that I wanted to highlight for the board. And that's all I have today for my superintendent comments.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about his board report? No? Okay, then we'll move on to public participation. So, we continue to have a virtual public participation.
Do we have to pause the meeting?
And we'll continue to, yeah?
We need to pause the meeting with, for a technical difficulty.
Okay, we have a technical glitch. We're going to pause. All right? We'll be back. Think in 10 minutes?
We're gonna, probably not that long. Mammella's gonna reset. What's, what's missing is the normal audio feed that goes out through the phone lines.
Fantastic. I'm hoping everyone can hear. All right. We continue to accommodate sort of this hybrid learn, technology. We continue to learn and perfect our hybrid models of public participation. Okay, so if you wanted to speak at today's meeting via remote participation, you're asked to sign up prior to noon today. And you could have done that by emailing or calling Laura Schaefer. Her email address is on the website. The Board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we do prefer that members of the public share any criticism of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all the staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you do choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the Board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. Okay, so to ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that you confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school board. We ask you that you limit your presentation to two minutes. Today, we do not have that many speakers, so we will not be going past the first hour. If you have run out of time...
I was telling you about the video.
Okay.
You need to stop when you're saying your...
Donna and Tom, could you mute? Thank you. Okay. And then, please...
I'm not speaking. I'm not, we have technical difficulties, or BVSD does, because I can't start my video.
Okay. Why don't we take another five-minute break while we work on this technical glitch? Are we good? Yes? Awesome. All righty. So I think where we're at is, if your time is cut at your two minutes or four minutes, if you're given two minutes by someone else, please send an email, and you can share the rest of your thoughts with the board. We do read all of our email. I try to get back to every email. I'm really, I'm pretty good, but I'm starting to fall off as I kind of end my term here. All right. So you will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. At that time, you're going to wrap up your comments, and you'll be seeing those cards over with Laura Schaefer. And that's it. So here we go. Our first speaker is Kathy Paylor. Excuse me if I have that wrong. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kathy Paylor, and I'm, I want to talk to you guys for a minute about the Sombrero Marsh Project. The Sombrero Marsh Project is a large-scale partnership between the Boulder Valley School District, the city of Boulder, and Habitat for Humanity to build an affordable housing modular factory. The goal is to annex BVSD property into the city of Boulder and then construct a 32,000 square foot, 45-foot-tall structure. It is the term factory that alarms the neighborhood due to the effect on wildlife, increased noise pollution, and impact on a residential neighborhood. It is ironic that this project is called Sombrero Marsh, because the actual Sombrero Marsh is a small habitat conservation area with a rare marsh and wildlife sanctuary that would be greatly impacted by this factory. Foreign nature experience also has a partnership with BVSD, and this new proposal is a conflict of interest. Combined with the food catering building, this area is quickly becoming an industrial complex. We have lived on Meadowark Drive for over 30 years. Our kids were educated in the Boulder Valley School District. We are big believers in alternative education. However, we are not convinced that factory skills would prepare kids for an ever-changing world. The city of Boulder will benefit from the use of an unpaid labor force. Is this the best use of Boulder Valley School District funds? Will this factory actually benefit the entire Boulder Valley School District student body? We implore you to reconsider this partnership and the proposed building of a factory that will compromise an entire ecological system and residential neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time and consideration tonight.
Okay, our next speaker is Travis Fox. Okay, our next speaker is...
Travis is not.
Oops. Is he on?
No.
Okay. Is Dane there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. My name is Dane Cobble. The Board is expected to promptly review the full package that I'm submitting via email, regardless of whether I'm able to squeeze it all into this two minutes. The fiduciary responsibility of the Board is to act properly and with all haste in response to the evidence and the clear conclusions drawn from it. First, it is a matter of federal law that this Board does not have the legal right to force health interventions based on an emergency's authorization, also known as an EUA. Masks are an EUA-designated device, and as such, by federal law, they cannot be imposed on anyone anywhere. Quoting federal law here, quote, "Individuals to whom the product is administered are informed of the option to accept or refuse the administration of the product," end quote. To protect your rights and the rights of those around you and to educate others, members of the Board are advised to print out and carry with them a notice that cites and explains the federal law. To do so, go to Children'sHealthDefense.org. Again, that's Children'sHealthDefense.org, and search on "legal resources." This will take you to the legal resources page, where you will see notices that we can all print out and carry. The next part of the package contains detailed, undisputed facts about the relative danger of COVID to our youth versus other causes of death. We're terribly saddened by the death of any child for any reason. In terms of COVID, then, we shall be relieved to know that the danger is very small. An analysis by the Lancet shows us that COVID deaths among children aged 0 to 14 was a total of 134 for a one-year period between March 1st of last year and February 1st of this year. That is eight tenths of 1% of the approximately 29,000 children or youth who died from all causes in the most recent year that such data is available. By comparison, the number of youth who killed themselves that year was over 2,300. That is 17 suicides for every one COVID death. For additional perspective, there were almost 1,000 drownings, or eight drownings per COVID death. This package also contains evidence from the large body of studies showing the masks are useless, and that even Dr. Fauci and the CDC have always agreed with this, right up until June, July of last year. Even further, the science empirical data submitted show clear and significant harm caused by masks. Not only are the mandates of the Board illegal, they are unnecessary and harmful. They must be rescinded, and no new mandates should replace them. Rather, let us concentrate on the ways we can improve our health and our well-being voluntarily. And please look for the petition to recall the three unrepentant board members so that you may sign it. And let's be grateful that Tina is not running again. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Amy Silverman.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Amy Silverman. I am the parent of a Sanchez Elementary first grader who is currently quarantined. And I'm also a registered nurse. And in my frustration yesterday, I began researching quarantine policy to see if there were alternatives. As the policy stands now, any child with a potential exposure seems that they get quarantined for seven to 10 days. This has resulted in me missing work an countable number of times over the past 18 months. And in my frustration, I started looking for alternatives. One such alternative is called the test-to-stay policy. And it's been written up frequently in the New York Times in the past month. And the articles are based on a study that came out in the Lancet, which compared the test-to-stay policy to the current quarantine policy. Now, test-to-stay is very straightforward. Instead of quarantining any child who has a potential contact with another person who has COVID-19, the child would be taking a rapid test the morning of school, and upon a negative test result, would be able to attend school that day. Now, the study in the Lancet, head-to-head, compared this test-to-stay policy with the current quarantine policy, as it's adopted in BVSD and across the US. And what they found was that the test-to-stay policy and the quarantine policy had similar rates of transmission and similar numbers of infections. And what surprised the researchers, and what surprised me, was that both of these policies are able to keep children safe. And at the same time, one of them, the current policy, has severe negative impacts on families, on the ability for children to have in-person learning, mental health in the community, and also financial and economic implications for families and women like myself, who are forced to miss work when their children are quarantined, and they don't end up getting sick from COVID-19.
Okay, our next speaker is Cynthia Neveson.
Yes, thank you. At the last school board meeting, Boulder Public Health presented slides purporting to show that schools with mandatory masking have lower COVID case rates, but the graphs didn't make sense on closer inspection. For schools with an August 23rd start week, the case rate peaked at about 800 per 100K students for schools that don't require masks versus 200 for those that do. For schools with an August 16th start week, the rate peaked at about 60 per 100K for those that don't require masks versus 30 for those that do. One might conclude that simply starting school a week earlier resulted in dramatically lower COVID rates, regardless of whether masks were required. But then Bloomsfield Public Health showed a slide where the COVID rate in schools opening August 16th was 350 per 100K for the schools that don't require masks versus 250 for those that do. When the Y-axis varies so wildly, can we have any confidence in these data, let alone use them to make public policy? Last Friday, the Douglas County Board of Health issued an order allowing parents to exempt their children from mask mandates because, quote, "Attempting to use children as a shield against spread in the community by masking or ineffectually quarantining asymptomatic children will pose a greater mental health risk to a much larger number of children, resulting in a far more negative overall impact to the community," unquote. Meanwhile, Iceland, Sweden, Norway, Denmark, and Finland all recently limited or suspended the use of the Moderna mRNA vaccine for young people because the risk of heart inflammation exceeds the benefit of the vaccines to children. Why have these countries suspended the vaccines, whereas we in Boulder are moving full steam ahead? These are serious policy inconsistencies. Douglas and Boulder County can't both be right on masks. Scandinavia and the US can't both be right on the risk-benefit ratio of COVID vaccines for kids. Is this really about science or politics? As my son told me this morning, kids are tired of masks and want to return to a normal school experience.
Our next speaker is Mark Leslie.
I am, I am on. Good evening, Boulder. Reporter Chuck Whibley said it best about the school board's behavior. If you dare question these people's authority, watch out. I've seen firsthand the reactions to parents who dare question them on anything. It's not pretty. Well, enough is enough. I'm questioning you and your constituents on behavior of dismissing, marginalizing, and intimidating parents who are concerned in question. Let's examine some of your constituents' financial, fanatical, obsessive behavior: harassment, bullying, threats, doxing, and encouraging illegal behavior on social media. And we have documented records of each of these examples. Tangi L., it is clear she is associated with the El Paso movement. Mr. Garcia may need to reference Board Member Conduct, Item E. Tangi posted on the Neighborhood App private information of a recalled petitioner's name, address, place of work, scouted his information in an effort to intimidate and harass her. In addition, she posted a copy of the recall petition prior to approval by the Boulder County Clerk. How she came to possess this information is being investigated. Barb J., while the post was deleted on the Neighborhood App, many people took screenshots of the threats that her and her partner, who allegedly works as a BVSD nurse, started, would start pulling unvaccinated children out of the classroom and giving them the shot without parental permission. That should be alarming to every parent. What are you doing about this threat? Joe P., he encouraged people to sign the petition with a false name. This is illegal behavior. I stated clearly on every petition, this is a form of perjury to those who signed. And Joe P. is encouraging the act of suborning perjury. You may not agree with the petitions, but illegal, malicious, damaging acts are unacceptable.
Kirsten Leslie. Yep, we can hear you.
Hello, my name is Kirsten, and I am the primary on the petition to recall Richard Garcia. This Board has taken ample time to express their opinions of this recall, but we have had no opportunity to tell our side. We have been censored, bullied, and threatened. To be clear, I am not affiliated with any business, and I do not represent anyone's views but my own. I do, though, speak on behalf of a coalition of parents who formed to address our grievances through the democratic and constitutional right of a recall process. This process holds elected officials accountable for their actions while in office. When this Board was elected, we had no way of understanding there would be a pandemic or how the Board would react to it. Now that more and more parents are speaking out, we have a course of action for the continued dismissal of important issues within our district. This goes beyond masking and mandatory vaccinations. Fairview High School is plagued with sexual harassment issues, and there have been busing decisions made without parental input, putting children in unsafe circumstances. One argument against the recall is that it is a frivolous and expensive action. The cost of $650,000 to $668,000, as quoted by the Boulder County Clerk and displayed on every petition, will hardly destroy a school system that has a budget of over $400 million annually and is receiving $41 million in COVID relief money. How many students withdrawing from BVSD is equivalent in lost funding to the cost of a successful recall? Fifty. Anyone who feels stuck in the shadows, frustrated by the current situation, here is your call to action. If not now, then when? If not me, then who? If you leave your child a world where you never stood up, they'll inherit a world where you, where they cannot. So let your voices be heard, email the Board, and let them know where you stand. The last point I have to make is BVSD-recall.org. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Tangi Lancaster, and she was given two minutes by Stephen Lancaster.
Hi, good evening. In honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day yesterday, I'd like to start off by stating, we are on stolen land. My name is Tangi Lancaster. I'm the mom of two BVSD students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening as a concerned mother and voter who lives within the school district. As such, it is never a coincidence for me to speak, or to attend and speak at BVSD Board meetings. I would think and hope that all BVSD voters would want to know if the petitioners who are coordinating this expensive recall effort actually live in the district or not. I recently heard that one of the petitioners against Lisa Sweeney Moran moved to Texas several months ago, and their business licenses are registered there as well. I guess that's why they just aren't running for the school board, but what about the others? I find it curious that in an election year with three open seats, instead of just running for a school board seat themselves, they have chosen to waste valuable school district resources that could be put towards our children's education. I mean, Kitty Sargent doesn't even have an opponent. Recall petitioners are construing the over $650,000 a recall election would cost the district as no big deal. Those of us who've worked in schools, who have children who receive special education services, who've worked with underrepresented families, can clearly see the privilege behind such talk. Again, I say, let's just keep this real. This recall effort isn't honestly about masks and children's mental health. This is part of a broader extremist movement that we are seeing sweep across the country with its foundation in white supremacy, which includes homophobia and racism. One only needs to listen to the vitriol eschewed at the last school board meeting towards the only non-white member of the Board, who has been an exemplary pillar of the Latina community for decades. Furthermore, to claim that a mask order that has been put in place to keep children in school, as, and I quote, "Arguably, one of the most oppressive agendas ever carried out on a human population, is most grotesque and tone-deaf to the centuries of atrocities committed against many oppressed people that continue today." According to Indira Gushral, Communicable Disease and Emergency Management Division Manager for Boulder County Public Health in Boulder, COVID-19 case numbers in Colorado are elevated for kids six to 11 years old. So, as a parent who fully understands the critical importance of in-person learning, thank you for listening to the experts, and keep up the great work, board members, in continuing to keep our children in school and as safe as possible, while also keeping religious ideologies out of the decisions that are made for our amazing and incredible diverse population. Thanks again for your time tonight.
Okay. And our final speaker is Dorian Lancaster.
Hi, my name is Dorian Lancaster, and I am a sixth grade student in BVSD. Thank you BVSD School Board for letting me talk here tonight. Before I even begin, thank you to Richard Garcia for understanding me as the only person of color on the school board. I would hate to have you off the school board. I spoke at the last school board meeting about this recall. Like I said last time, this recall is not logical. I don't like having to wear masks, but it's not hurting me. And the sooner we end the pandemic, the sooner we all don't have to wear masks. I know a child my age who got COVID, and all of her organs became inflamed. She was in the ICU for a week, and she now has permanent heart issues forever. She was in the ICU for a week, and she now has permanent heart issues forever, for forever. Do you think I'm more afraid of having to wear a mask or having every organ in my body inflamed than having permanent heart issues? Another recall isn't just about masks, it's trying to uphold white supremacy. People are attacking the only person of color on the school board to uphold white supremacy. Masks are helping us to not get COVID. Would you rather stay safe with masks on or risk yourself and others getting COVID? People, you are blinded from the truth. Masks are helping us reduce COVID cases. There have been over 600,000 confirmed cases of COVID and over 7,000 deaths in Colorado as of this day. Before I end my case, thank you one more time, BVSD School Board, for keeping me safe. I'm very thankful that you have my back.
Okay, and that concludes public participation. Board members, any comments? Oh, Kitty?
I want to thank everyone who spoke to us today, and especially to Dorian. I always love it when we have students talking to us. And I realized that at the last meeting, I did not state my unequivocal support for my colleagues who are the target of these recall, or this recall effort. So I want to state that again. Kathy, Lisa, Richard have done a great job, and I support them staying on the board. And please ask people not to sign the petitions.
Other comments? Lisa?
Let's see, a few things. Well, I was so excited to go see the ALPS program this week. The approach that we're taking there, the holistic nature of the work they're doing, it's remarkable. Having the opportunity to really talk to the students and the teachers and the support staff there, I think it's very clear how effective that work is. I think, as most people know, I dropped out of Boulder High my junior year, and I was lucky enough to have a support structure that got me back on track, but that was certainly a function of privilege that the bulk of our students don't have. A program like ALPS absolutely would have saved me when I was, when I was a junior in high school, and it's my hope that we can talk more in the coming weeks about the work that they do and about how we can offer additional support to them. I was really very impressed. Thank you to the community for the amount of support we've seen during this recall effort. I'll mention that we've got a site up at nobvstdrecall.com where you can go and learn more about that. And then as a final thought, you know, I think part of the reason that I'm so enthusiastic about masking being the right thing to do is because it keeps us on track with a fairly normal school year. I was, I was talking to some teachers about how they are unable to participate in field trips, and so then they had some folks coming onsite, specifically some of our eco-cycle programs, but then we couldn't get those programs in the building. So now they're trying to have the eco-cycle programs outside, hopefully in weather that will hold, and they're not sure if it'll work out. So I'm hoping that we can have some conversations too about ways that we can encourage these programs still to occur in our schools, even if we can't make field trips happen, as long as we're taking the appropriate precautions around masking and quarantining. That's about it.
Okay, Richard?
I too want to thank the community for their wonderful support on this recall effort, and those that are opposing the recall effort, because I think it's something that they are clear-minded in terms of what they want to do, and I agree with Kitty as it relates to students that come and speak their mind. And Dorian, I just want to say that you are such an articulate young man that I truly appreciate your comments because they do make a lot of sense, a lot more sense than some of the adult comments. I also want to echo Lisa's comments around ALPS, because I was also present when we visited that particular program, and I do agree, it's a wonderful program, and it's limited in scope right now, but I'm hoping that it can grow, and perhaps maybe see ALPS in every high school in the district, because I think it's needed. And they do tremendous work. I saw that it's populated by kids that come from Centaurus, kids that come from Boulder High, the students that have come from New Vista, and I was pleased to see that some of these particular students, they're on target to graduate soon, and it's all because of the support they're getting through the ALPS program. So, thank you very much, ALPS program. Also, I want to mention that I participated in Hablando sobre Educación. That is hosted by the school district, and the host is Patricia Valderama, and she did a great job. She interviewed me about my past and my background as a board of education, et cetera. But I also want to mention that Patricia, in doing the work that she's doing and the support she gives to community, is also being honored by the University of New Mexico Human Services with the Community Services Award. So Patricia, congratulations, and thank you so much for your work. And I'm hoping that at some point, we'll have you on the recognition, Super and Head is recognition awards here, Sue. The masking issue, I think, is something that is widespread, again, around the U.S. and not just so much isolated to Boulder County. I mentioned, I think, at the last meeting that we do have some colleagues from the Windsor School District that are also being recalled for the same, for supporting their health department and masking. And I wish them a lot of luck in terms of making sure that they stay on their board of education, because they're, according to my sources, they're really stalwart pillars of the community also. So with that, thanks all the supporters that are standing behind us and our colleagues in terms of not signing the petitions for the recall effort. And I also urge, if you see circulators, do not sign them. Talk with them, waste their time, but don't sign them.
Stacy?
Yeah, I, in the past, have voiced my support for my colleagues, but I haven't read my statement that I put on social media. It only takes a few minutes, not even a few minutes. So I thought I would just read my statement briefly, and for all of those who are not on social media, because I feel really strongly about supporting them as well. I fully support my board of education colleagues who are facing a recall initiative. Since the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education members are not public health experts, our board has navigated the pandemic with guidance and partnership with Boulder County Public Health. We are grateful for this partnership and feel that our decisions are in the best interests of all students and employees in our district. I'm disappointed that substantial financial resources would be required to pay for the special election. Using our resources in this way is not the best interest of our students, our employees, or our community at large. And again, I echo, if you see a petition, please decline to sign. We have done, I believe, the best we could under extraordinary circumstances, and I fully support the decisions that we've made. Thank you.
Checking in with Donna, do you have any comments?
I do have a few. I wanted to be here in person tonight, but because I met with a friend whose daughter recently tested positive for COVID, I was advised by the district's nurse to participate virtually. So apologize for not being here in person, and there were a lot of technical issues to even get on tonight, so I wasn't there for the pledge or the, I'm here, but I'm here. I want to encourage our community to get out and vote. This is your chance to have your voice represented. Serving on the board is a difficult position, and it's very time-consuming. Between Tom and I, our family holds a record, I think, 12 years, for serving on this board. So I know the joy and the pain this service can bring. Your vote is where you can make a difference for all the children in your community. Boarding members have difficult and rewarding times. I want to make it clear that I have not instigated or been part of the recall effort, but I have been the recipient of many false accusations, assumptions, and character defamation. It's unfortunate what this volunteer position, that this volunteer position can elicit such angry responses. It's important to mention that if people don't like what a board member has to say, they will ask that person to resign and tell lies about them. I didn't resign, as you can see. I was alarmed when people that were considering running, as was brought up tonight, why aren't more people running for a board seat, decided not to run because they feared for their own safety or that of their family. I'm also alarmed that some teachers and staff feel fear for their livelihood or their position if they have a differing opinion from others. When you vote someone into this office, they should listen to all voices and make decisions based on what is best for all children. It hasn't been easy to serve. It's been both rewarding and disappointing. When you vote for someone, make sure they are who you want to represent you, and they will make decisions based on what is best for all children. Make sure they will not only hear you, but listen to you and understand your point of view. I won this seat overwhelmingly, and I'm happy to have been an advocate for those of you that elected me. I was a big part of making positive changes to our reading program. We now have a curriculum and testing that supports our dyslexic readers and offers an intervention and success to all struggling readers. I'm also happy to have been a part of the decisions to protect our students' data privacy. We need to continue to keep this issue current and address needed changes regularly. Student screen time was just beginning to be addressed when COVID hit, and so screen time became necessary and unbelievably on steroids. Wow. I hope the new board will continue to address the amount of screen time students should have in the future. I've always been a proponent of lowering teacher caseloads, also known as class size, which is, as a former teacher for decades, I realized how lower class size is by even just a few students allows teachers more time per student. It's just simple math. More students equal less time per student for a teacher. I have a few additional comments to add here that have to do with some of the comments made tonight by our public participation, so bear with me. We're just like about three more minutes. I was the only board member that voted against removing the SROs from our school district. I believe this was a valuable opportunity for students to build relationships with law enforcement, as well as law enforcement to provide this service to school districts at a much lower cost than we now have to bear. Keep in mind that students are referred to SROs by staff. It's not SROs that are targeting students. We did not address this issue when we got rid of SROs. I believe the decision to remove them was reactionary and not well thought out. I regret that we did not allow a charter school into our district. I believe competition is healthy, and parent choice is crucial to the success of our students. When parents have choices of schools for their children, then our schools are incentivized to step up and work to become a school that parents want their child to attend. I do not think the pros and cons were considered appropriately or accurately on that decision. I'm concerned that we haven't adequately addressed the achievement and opportunity gaps, and there are still many issues that are imbalanced. Some parents can afford one-to-one tutoring for their children, not only during online learning, but currently during in-person learning. This clearly gives those students that get one-to-one tutoring outside of classroom time an advantage. This is not equal opportunity. Some parents send their children to school with higher-quality computers, while the ones the district provides is the Chromebook. The Chromebook doesn't have the capability to run many applications, i.e. MATLAB, that would give someone a step up in a post-secondary education pursuit. Think slide ruler versus calculator. An example is when my husband took his engineering courses way back in the day, he could only afford a slide rule. When he saw the advantage that a calculator, a simple calculator, brings, he saved his money. It took a long time to be able to keep up with other students and get that calculator instead of the slide rule. How can we, as the district and a board, address this opportunity gap? I still believe our district should follow choice, especially for students with medical issues such as asthma when it comes to masking. An example, and it's very personal here, if you've ever been the mother of a child that's been in an ICU for severe asthma attacks, spent days there, if you've ever had to give daily nebulizer treatments, and keep an inhaler handy, when you know how, then you know how serious a health matter it is to be masked. We need an opt-out process that doesn't require parents to go through hoops. 504 application, meet with the team, only find out that they get a modification, a mask break every few hours. My son couldn't have endured that. He needs to breathe. There is science on both sides when it comes to masks, and it's constantly changing. I remember walking the trails with a mask on and people, and a mask off, and people being afraid and putting their hands up and falling up against a tree as if I was going to shoot them when I was just outdoors breathing. If it protects you, wear it. If it harms, then let's allow for choice without judgment and slander. We've had football games this semester, which I've attended, where students are shoulder to shoulder, mouth to mouth, even sharing water bottles, all unmasked. Not only is this hypocrisy, but we did not see a rise in cases or quarantines. We need to have our priorities aligned when it comes to the safety and freedom of our students. I encourage all parents and students to evaluate the risks, get vaccinated, get healthy, wear your mask, or whatever combination you need to feel safe and protected, but we should not force this. I do not think we should spend board time on revoking the pledge. We have plenty of other agenda items to address. People want to come to America and learn in our schools and our system because we represent liberty and justice for all. We are all part of a society that needs to support each other. I'm a firm believer that the Pledge of Allegiance is representation of the freedom we have and those that have fought and died for those freedoms you enjoy. We've seen a lot of hate and division in our community. I'm almost finished. One person pulled out of the recall because of the hate calls and threats that she was receiving. One of the speakers tonight even made a post on Nextdoor encouraging people to locate her home. Other people on the recall have received threats to them or their family. After the motion I made in April to allow choice in masking, we had to install more security at my home because my home was vandalized. These kinds of actions and threats need to stop and stop now. My hope is that we can come together, have debate, and reason through these important issues. Let's get out and vote, but most of all, let's be kind, honest, and understand each other's points of view. Thanks.
Okay, Kathy?
I want to thank all the speakers who came tonight, both those who support the recall and those who are against the recall. I appreciate them coming. I think it's a good example of how, when you have an opinion, the district is open to hearing all opinions on all issues. I'd like to read a little bit from the website that was referenced, because I think the public needs to hear some of the opinions that the people who are supporting the recall, and this comes from the person who signed my recall position, or petition, I think his name is Michael Gata. I support what Lisa said and what Richard said and my fellow colleagues on the board. I think the choices are pretty clear here, and so I think when you hear some of the positions that the recall petitioners are taking, I think you'll understand why I say that it's very clear. So it starts off with a statement that COVID-19 is a man-made, laboratory-created bioweapon created by a U.S.-China partnership. Goes on to say that PCR testing is completely meaningless and invalid for clinical diagnosis. It goes on to say, if we actually followed the science, all testing of anyone would end tomorrow. Goes on then to talk about all of the, it's pretty clear that they don't believe that COVID is anyway, is not a serious disease, and at the end, we are being called, I've never actually been called this, so I find it rather interesting. Let me get down, there's a lot of information on this website. So if you want to hear more about the opinions, go ahead and look at the website and click through. But it goes on to say, the tyrannical efforts of eugenicist technocrats, I guess that's us. I guess we're eugenicist technocrats. Been called child abusing, I've been called all sorts of things because I support our public health, but I had not yet been public health, but I had not yet been called a eugenicist technocrat. So anyway, I encourage people to go and look because, as I support what Donna said, you should get out and vote in this election, and if people were upset about our position on masking and protecting our students and protecting our staff and protecting our community, then they should have entered into this election. That's the way it should have gone. There's no reason, nobody's offered me an explanation as to why they didn't step up for this election, and instead they want to cost our district almost $700,000. And the other concerning thing I find is that people say they're not being listened to, but there's a difference between listening and agreeing. And I can listen to all sorts of opinions. It doesn't mean I'm not listening, but it doesn't mean that if I'm not listening, if I don't agree, that I'm not listening. You don't get to conflate those two. And so I hear that a lot, that they're not being listened to, and they actually mean I just don't agree with them. And I stand by my decision to support my superintendent and to support my public health and to support the health of my community, and if I get recalled for that, I will do it proudly because I think I did the right thing. And so I hope everybody will decline to sign, but if you don't, I guess we'll find out in January, whenever this election is. But thank you for the support. Thank you for the people who showed up tonight outside the board meeting. Thank you to Dennis and others for showing up, for Richard and for others, and for the voice of the Latino community. Thank you for the emails I've received in support, and I will continue to support the superintendent and my local public health and all the decisions that they've made. Thank you.
And yeah, I think this is a great time to get out and vote, and as you remember, I led the meeting with a reminder to hear, learn about your school board candidates and be active, so this is, this is election season. And yeah, the abuse, the name-calling, I unfortunately was called some expletives at the farmer's market on Saturday, Saturday by one of the petition people, and it is terrible. So, and it certainly is not representative of the eight years I've been on this board. This is probably the only four months where I felt real hostility and harassment in that sense. So it's definitely part of a bigger thing that's bigger than Boulder, for sure. It doesn't feel like Boulder to me, and I hope that in the near future, we can stop going to those levels of name-calling. So the other things, on a completely more mundane note, we did attend the Great Education Luncheon. If you're not aware, Great Ed is one of the strongest voices for increasing resources for kids. As everyone is aware, we still do not have the resources to meet all of the needs of our kids, particularly our kids with special education needs and our kids that are low-income. So while we do incredible work to close these gaps with those kids, we still need more resources. As Deirdre Pilch put it really nicely at the luncheon, trust me, we have ways we could do more, but we still do not have all the resources we need to do all the work we want to do. So I do appreciate Great Education's involvement and advocacy on behalf of all the districts who are working hard to close these gaps. The other piece is, as a parent, and I'm hearing this a lot, is just thank you to all the teachers who are still doing online virtual parent-teacher conferences. This has added an option for parents to be engaged with their child's learning that is really pretty phenomenal, especially at the high school level. So I just hear so much positive feedback about how easy it is, how both parents can be involved, how different parent can be involved. It's been pretty cool. So I just want to, and I think it takes a lot of work, so I want to thank all the schools and the teachers for doing that. I don't think it can be said enough, but I recognize that this is, again, a very hard year for our staff and our teachers as we navigate this year, and I want to extend my thanks for all the work they're doing. I know, and also to thank parents for their patience. This is still difficult work. People are still working hard. We're trying to do the improvements and do our strategic plan initiatives while catching up from last year simultaneously. So the work that we're all doing is really challenging. It's probably exhausting, and I'm just very thankful that everyone is sticking here with us and helping our kids. Finally, yo también quiero agradecer a los padres que estaban enfrente para apoyar a Richard, Lisa, and Kathy. Thank you very much. So that was very nice to see them out there in front of the building. And again, if you're not aware, I believe the free election was the way to go to change the direction of the school board, and it's a disappointment there's a recall. That's sort of the simultaneous distraction. So of course, from my point of view, declined to sign. All right, Kathy?
I forgot to say that I just want our public to know that while the recall does take some energy, this board remains committed to doing the good work that we have done for the last six years while I've been on it. We will get a presentation tonight on our strategic plan. We will continue to do all the good things that we were elected to do, and we will continue to work strongly and advocate for all of our students, for resources for all of our students, and to close those opportunity gaps for all our students. So while it's a little bit of a distraction, we will continue to do the work that we were elected to do.
Richard?
Tina, just let me make a couple of more comments, and I too want to give my thanks to the people that were outside supporting Kathy, Lisa, and myself on this recall effort. También yo quiero dar las gracias a toda la gente que estuvo afuera hoy esta noche apoyando el esfuerzo que estamos haciendo nosotros aquí en la mesa directiva para tener a sus niños seguros y sanos. Muchas gracias a todos ustedes. I also want to thank the people that have been bringing up El Paso over and over and over again because it is free publicity for us, you know? El Paso is an organization that was established in 2014 through the Community Foundation serving Boulder County for specific purposes. One is to help parents, help their kids gain tools and information necessary for them to keep their kids and get them ready for kindergarten before they start school. The other one is to build a community voice of Latinos, and that's what we're doing, and apparently it's working very, very, very well. And I thank you all for bringing El Paso up and continue doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is the strategic plan metrics.
Thank you, Board President Marquez. Board members, we are going to be making our first strategic plan metric presentation to you all this evening. As the board will recall, that we entered into a community process, it seems about like 18 months ago, to begin to start to really think about what are the metrics that would be important for us to show as a community that would align to our goals of increasing opportunity and reducing disparities and making sure that kids have post-secondary opportunities as well. So you'll see some of, some of the graphs you'll see are a little bit technical, and Jonathan will be there to present those, and then some of the highlights from what we're seeing, and there are signs of progress of our strategic plan that I'm excited to share. Our team is excited to share with you all this evening. And so I'm excited for this presentation. With that, I will turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Laura De La Cruz.
Good evening, President Marquez, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. We are so glad to provide you with a fall update about our Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan metrics this evening. Jonathan and I will be specifically highlighting some achievements, growth, and areas of progress. Of course, our strategic plan is grounded in our long-term outcomes to ensure that all students benefit from engaging and relevant educational opportunities, that we reduce disparities, so that every student graduates with the skills needed for postgraduate success. In other words, to ignite, equip, and soar. I know you're familiar with our strategic plan metrics as evidence of success. You'll notice a slight change in terminology as we continue to evolve our strategic plan work. These are the same outcomes that we're going to continue reporting back to you on: achievement and growth, opportunity and equity, and addressing disproportionality. Tonight, we are focusing on some highlights around the metrics of growth, discipline, and hiring teachers and leaders of color. We're going to start by sharing some trends and celebrations in our hiring practices. As we've shared previously, we're making important gains in hiring teachers, staff, and leaders of color, and specifically, nearly all our candidate folders continue to include people of color. From 2019 to 2021, we've had a 56% increase in postings where a person of color was interviewed. And in those same years, from 2019 to 2021, we've had a 30% increase in postings where a person of color was hired. We still have a ways to go, but we do want to highlight strides that we're making in this direction. And as a person of color, it can feel alienating when we don't have folks who look like us in positions around us, and certainly our students have told us that same thing, as well as our staff. And that's why we're working to change this in Boulder Valley. And we're going to show you some of our efforts that are coming to fruition in BVSD with two short videos about the progress that we're making. And here's the first one.
I had just came back from Mexico, and I didn't speak any English at all, and there was not a big diversity in the students, absolutely, even in the students or in the teachers, so I had no one that I could really talk to, and I didn't notice how lonely I was.
Sometimes it's just a very simple thing, is just, I see you, we acknowledge each other, and we see that we have something in common, so it already creates, you know, a little bridge there.
It took me a while to realize how much I was missing people that looked like me and how much it really was affecting me.
Education, a large part of, is about relationships, building relationships, and if we can, you know, lower any of the barriers to relationships, you know, I think that's the thing that we should always continue to promote.
Columbine is a bilingual school that really cares about this whole child. We want to make sure that students are always having rigorous opportunities for their education. Connections is number one before we can get anything else done. Making sure that we know what the needs of the students are, making sure we know what the needs of the family are, because if you're not meeting those basic needs, it's really hard.
It just makes you feel more, I'm being as a parent also, but just as a staff member, you can see their faces relax when you answer back in, like, if they ask, hablas español, and you say, claro que sí, ¿cómo le puedo ayudar? You just see that relaxation, which we should all have as parents.
So by ensuring that people of color are in all ranks in BVSD, we can help our students to open their perspectives on what they can be and how they can contribute, which they can see even more clearly when they see others who look like them teaching, working, and leading in our schools and in our district. And we have one more video to showcase that.
As a child growing up and as a young adult, you know, you start to wonder if, you know, you can be in those roles, and if so, why don't you see representation of it?
I never had someone that I could talk to and they could relate, and they could tell me that it's going to be okay and that I also have a future and whatever I want to be.
To me, for our students, that's one of the most impactful things we can do as a school. You know, seeing people that look like us in those successful roles for students is extremely important, is motivating.
For me, it's really important for them to see themselves as Latino children, or whatever it might be with jobs, female versus male, or non-binary, whatever it might be, to see themselves in that job. You can't think you can make it if you've never seen anybody doing it.
I want to become either a special ed teacher or just a gen ed teacher. I just want to be there for little kids to see that you can be a teacher, and you can be a doctor, you can be all these jobs that everyone wants to have, they're like, I want to be a doctor, I want to be an astronaut, that it is attainable, no matter what you look like, if you look like me, if you look like the person next to me, that it is something that's there for you.
Really incredible to hear directly from our students, the impact that our efforts are having. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan, who's going to share some of her data.
President Marquez, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. So I just wanted to walk through the data in a little bit more detail. What you're seeing here is the same information you were shown at the end of August, really talking about the hiring practices. And for all the big changes that we see here, when we, when we look at what this means as far as our total group of employees overall, on the next slide, what we'll see, right, is that this translates into gains that don't look as huge, but at one percentage point of gain, in, which is what we're talking about here, making annually, as judges in the metrics, we had shown in the past, as we compute these based on .5 FTE or higher jobs. It's this kind of effort over time that leads to gains a lot like the one that we're seeing here. And we'll hope for more of the same with these, with these good hiring practices. When we turn a little bit to talk about academics, we don't have data that are nearly as easy to measure. As you know, we didn't have a normal testing year like last year, but some of the data that are sort of the best to look at when you don't have full participation are actually data around growth. And the growth data, though, they come with some interpretation complications, were able to be provided for grades five, six, seven, eight, and eight in the required content areas of language arts at fifth and seventh, and math at sixth and eighth. The highest participation that we saw was in grade five. And what we see, you know, that we, when we look at what we did overall, though, right, we saw typically results in Boulder Valley that were, well, we need to use some caution based on the participation rates, higher than what we saw statewide. Those are the dots here in yellow. But the other comparison that was made of these data, we're not simply to what was done statewide by students who tested, but asking the question, how would students have, would this year's group of students, going from, in this case, third to fifth grade, stack up against kids who made progress pre-pandemic? So this is a comparison of 2019 to 2021 growth compared to a 2017 to 2019 standard. So as we see on the next slide, when we dig into grade five, we can see that on the upper plot here, that the, that the bar, the horizontal gray bars moved a little bit to the right, indicating growth that's a little higher. At the same time, we're a little, you know, we're a little concerned that the growth gap may have moved up slightly for Latinx students here. And then the next slide where this comes through much, much stronger is for results for free and reduced lunch eligible students. This is where we saw, so on the one hand, we saw comparatively good growth in Boulder Valley overall. On the other hand here, we have, we have a bit of a gap opening, and we have some other data also that isn't part of this presentation that would tend to corroborate this. So moving to the next slide. I turn it back over to Dr. De La Cruz.
So in the midst of the pandemic, our fifth graders made greater progress overall and by student groups in reading growth. So students who identify as Latinx and students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch also made growth that we're really proud of. BVSD fifth-grade students made 50, demonstrated a 55 median growth percentile versus Colorado, which demonstrated, state of Colorado overall, which demonstrated median growth percentile of 46. BVSD Latinx students demonstrated growth of 48 versus Colorado, who demonstrated growth of 39. We're seeing those growth points showing up on the chart. And BVSD students eligible for free and reduced lunch demonstrated median growth of 46 versus Colorado students eligible for free and reduced lunch, who demonstrated median growth of 40. So you can see that we were outpacing across the state. Something that we also want to share with you is that we're going to turn our attention to behavior indicators and discipline. And we all know that, we've seen in media, we know it's true here, it's been reported, we're seeing it in our schools and across the state and country, the impact of the pandemic. We talked about it earlier in the work session. That's also true here with our students in BVSD. Kids are having trouble adjusting to being back in school. And Jonathan's going to walk us through some of the data, and we'll return to more of the conversation. the conversation.
So the basic logic that we use when we talk about proportionality is to compare the percentage of BVSD's population overall with the percentage of students in a particular group who get a certain result or have a certain opportunity. So advancing the slide a little bit, and we tend to color the outcomes here, so that orange would talk about a pattern that's potentially problematic, right, and blue looks at a pattern that for a given group is more positive. On these displays, the brownish-gray bar is the percentage of students represented in Boulder Valley's population, which you can see here in the arrow example pointing is 18% Latinx for this particular group. But we see that when only 7% of that group has the opportunity that's noted in this particular example, that we color code that as orange to highlight that as something for us to look at. On the next slide, we look at discipline data, and we note that for this is the data from last year, admittedly a year that was not a normal year, but one in which we did have time both in school and out of school to think about discipline data. We saw results last year that were actually more proportional than in past years. So we saw some positive movement here as far as the behavioral incidents overall. However, on the next slide, what we would see is that this fall, in the patterns that Laura had talked about seeing in other districts, that our incidents are really less proportional this fall. This is a challenging pattern for us, and one which we wanted to dig into a little bit harder. As much as it's a concern overall, looking at behavioral incidents, the incidents that have the biggest consequences for students are shown on the next slide, which are shown in terms of exclusionary discipline. This means instances in which a student is suspended either in school, out of school, or expelled or given a deferred expulsion. This is a genuinely challenging pattern that we have. It is particularly challenging for me to see that we have more suspensions and expulsions of Latinx students this year than there are for students who are white, right, even though white students outnumber Latinx students more than three to one. And that this pattern holds with regard to free and reduced lunch eligibility also. So in not wanting to make you think that we pulled out only the positive things to talk about, there are some real patterns for us to focus our work on here. And the next slide.
And with all that being true, what we know for sure is that we need to be responsive and proactive in our support of students and behavior and discipline. We know that our behavior supports are on the rise, on the increase. This year, from the beginning of the year through September 30th, there's been an increase in the use of restorative interventions, with 276 restorative interventions already this year compared to 170 for all of last year. There's been an increase in student warning conferences, and with that being 277 so far this year as compared to 200 all of last year. And then also an increase in parent conferences, with 149 so far this year as compared to 96 all of last year. And alternatives to suspension overall have increased with 26 this year through September 30th as compared to 17 all of last year. We're addressing disproportionate discipline in a number of ways, and some of the ways that we're continuing to improve to better support the system in the areas of behavior, discipline, and trauma response are through hiring and training for more specific support. We've hired a restorative practices specialist, Janelle King, and a Title IX coordinator, Elizabeth Francis, both of whom joined us yesterday. Yesterday was their first day. Some important trainings that continue are the monthly Vortex meetings for administrators focused on disproportionate discipline, the RISE trainings for all staff, and just as a reminder that was mentioned, we have a couple of different RISE acronyms, but this is the RISE that stands for resilience in educators and students in education. It's a whole school social-emotional learning program that's culturally responsive and trauma responsive and promotes that resilience in educators and students. It focuses on building our educators' own social-emotional skills and well-being, and building intentional classroom environments and positive school culture and climate. Restorative practices and trainings are going to launch more fully with our safety advocates when they start. We are eager, Randy, you can change the slide, thank you. We are eager to see where our new restorative practices coordinator and Title IX colleagues take our efforts along with the additional trainings. We do believe these are going to enable us to build on the work already in progress in the district. In fact, we want to showcase that at New Vista High School, practices have been implemented around restorative justice, which is one type of restorative practice. And we spoke to students about those efforts and their experiences, and we want to show you that as well.
We brought restorative justice to New Vista about 20 years ago, believing that there was a better way to deal with inappropriate behaviors than the traditional punitive approaches.
As a student-led organization at New Vista, the students of RJ are responsible for the process in which we hold the circle.
Now, restorative justice sits everyone down who's been involved in an incident. Now, this might be the teachers, staff, fellow students, people in the actual community, like business owners or just members of the community, and really works to make sure that everyone is gaining something from the process. It sits the person who causes harm and the person who was harmed in a circle together, so the person who was harmed can express to the person who caused the harm what's happened and why they feel hurt, and what they need to be able to grow from this process. And it allows the person who caused the harm to have a better way to express what they were thinking, or maybe not thinking, and make sure that they can have some agreement items come together to be able to make sure that everyone can grow, learn, and come away from the process feeling like they've gained something.
I have seen how the harm has been repaired through this process. I've seen the person who caused the harm grow and become a better person. I have seen the person who was harmed be able to move forward with their life completely satisfied. I have seen the administration and the community fully support this program and the people involved. And I have seen how this has made the community as a whole a better place, whereas if traditional measures were used, nobody else would be involved in the process other than the person who caused harm and the administrators. Whereas in this process, everybody grows and becomes a better person.
Restorative justice is such an important and influential program that we have here. It is a great time commitment, but it is so worth it. We get to see the positive impacts of it every day in the halls of New Vista High School. We strongly believe that every school deserves that opportunity, and we are so excited to see this program implemented across the district.
Of course, that's one example of how restorative practices are so impactful at one school. And we know that we have more learning and development across our system yet to go, and we can't wait to return in the future to share progress across our schools in the area of restorative practices. We are really delighted tonight to share that Alicia Sanchez Elementary is a bright spot in both academics and behavior. At Sanchez, we are seeing even greater growth. Earlier, we mentioned how BVSD fifth graders are doing compared to their peers across the state. Sanchez specifically stood out because students overall, actually Sanchez outpaced fifth graders in BVSD as well as the state. Students overall demonstrated an MG, a median growth percentile in reading of 57, which is 11 points above the state. Students who identify as Latinx demonstrated a median growth percentile of 57, which is 18 percent points above the state. And students eligible for free and reduced lunch demonstrated a median growth percentile of 63, which is 23 percentile points above the state. Sanchez has really adopted data-driven instruction, or DDI, and this is one of the key practices being implemented at the school through their work with partnerships for leaders in education. So as you can see, oh, sorry.
We have taken the approach of looking at the whole child through the data, but not just looking at the numbers, looking at what is that data telling us? What is the story behind the data that's helping us to make adjustments and meet our students where they are?
So the work that needs to be done at a student level, in the classroom level, in terms of what are kids really learning and what next steps do I need to take, that can happen more easily now, because classroom teachers have a heavy lift. And what we realized we needed was to really dig into the data and really be responsive and proactive with how our students are learning. So not just what we're teaching and how we're teaching, but what the kids are learning.
Intentional monitoring gives us the tools to be able to check in with every single student. Every student feels heard, they feel like they're getting checked in with, and we're able to record data the entire time, knowing how each student is working on their own work. And that can work for math, for literacy, across the board.
The answer that I have here is what fraction am I left with?
As teachers, are challenged to give students achievable small goals that they can reach on a day-to-day basis, on a weekly basis, on a unit basis. So the DDI work has given us as teachers the tools to do the exact same for ourselves, to be able to have small achievable goals instead of getting lost in the enormity of the challenge ahead of us.
So our new fraction is going to be eight, thirteen over eight.
One piece of the data-driven instruction process we've added this year is this idea of intentional monitoring. And it's really powerful, and we look at it as a practice, not an assessment. But really, what you're doing is you're gathering data in the moment about your students, so you can respond in the moment with feedback, as well as use that to inform your later instructions. So we're really working with teachers to see that as a practice and part of their instruction. And I think that's exactly the kind of, you know, on-the-boots, in-the-moment response to students and use of data that's going to be really powerful.
We're not only looking at data-driven instruction through the reading, writing, math lens, but we're also looking at that through a social-emotional learning lens as a whole building, and so that we're committed to that whole child and not just one aspect of it.
What I'm going to ask you to do is see if you can tell me what fraction you have left.
Intentional monitoring isn't about coming down on a student, saying, oh, you're not doing this correctly. It's like, oh, well, can we do better? Now give it a try, and we, you know, come back around and I'll check in with you again in another five minutes. They know that if they miss something in an assessment, that in a week, two weeks, we're going to step back in and make sure that there is understanding there. If not, another part of our UVA work is being able to again meet with the team so that make sure that each student is receiving the necessary intervention that they need.
But the biggest thing I think we can celebrate is that when we're looking at our school, we're changing the way we're teaching to respond to how students are learning. And that's the biggest piece, and that hopefully will be seen across any assessment, any measure, and any protocol.
I agree. I agree with the applause. Really incredible how Sanchez is leading the way with evidence-based practices, and we are seeing those outcomes in terms of learning and growth in the students. As you can see, also BVSD is making great progress. We certainly have our work yet to go and ahead of us, but lots of highlights to share with you tonight, and Jonathan and I are happy to take any questions or discussion that the board may have.
All right, thank you. That is so exciting and just incredible that even during the challenges of the pandemic, that we still saw some growth with some of the places where there is a lot of intention and focus. Questions, board members? Lisa?
Obviously, the discipline portion is frustrating and disappointing, and I don't think we can expect overnight change, but I do think that we did a lot of work towards trying to figure out how we could identify what's causing the issues and do a better job of targeting and making change. So I guess what I'm wondering is, have we made any progress on that with standardizing our discipline code and using the dashboards and sort of checking in more on all these different things that we discussed? Are we able to figure out what's going wrong and where it's going wrong, or does it still feel like we're at C?
So I would say that every superintendent, every principal, everyone that I speak with is seeing an uptick in discipline. I think that with our monthly Vortex meetings, we are digging into the data in real time. I think one of the beauties of having strategic plan metrics is whether the news is great or promising or troubling, that we shine a light on that, and we continue to work on those things. I will say that, you know, our restorative justice coordinator and Title IX coordinator just started today, right? And so they'll begin to really build our capacity on those teams. I'm frustrated as well, as I'm sure everyone here is, in regards to, you know, we would have hoped that some of those changes that we made would have immediately reduced the disproportionality. I will say, though, that I'm more confident than ever that the data that you're looking at is true, right, in the sense that we've got the codes, we've set the expectations, that we feel like it's true data that we're looking at. I will tell you that when you look at that data, and which shouldn't be a surprise, especially for those of us that have worked in schools or in Title I schools, our students in poverty are the ones that are struggling the most. And so, you know, as we think about how this data is going to help us change both at the school level and system level, is a reminder to board members that we've committed to be sharing this data, school by school, with each school's School About Accountability Council, and so they can take a look at this, own this, and understand what are the things that we can do. With our restorative justice coordinator, Title IX coordinator, student support team, we do have additional resources. And that we're also seeing through the weighted differentiated funding, that schools have had more resources than ever before to begin to dig into some of these problems, and whether that's through teacher training, through classroom management, whether that's through standing up, more robust restorative justice practices at each of our schools. I do think that they're in a position to do something about it. But, board members, let's just be clear, as we share this data, and we share this on a regular basis, we're always going to have opportunities for us to get better. I think what I want our community to know is that we're being honest about that, we're being very transparent, and we're committed to the work. And I think we put the resources there, put the systems in place. Not pleased with the disproportionality, certainly, but I do think that it shines a light on what the work is that we need to work on.
I really appreciate the transparency, and I think there's no doubt that a lot of incredible work has gone into this so far, and I hear what you're saying about other things being in place. If I could just ask one more question, when you think about what we've done so far, when you think about the new folks we're starting, when you think about what it means to be recovering from COVID, do you have a timeline in mind for when you're hoping to see these numbers start to make a U-turn and have this work have a substantial impact?
I believe that you'll see some differences between this first nine weeks and then the second nine weeks' data. A, a lot of the data that I think we've seen out of the gate has just been from kids who have not been to regular school in a couple hundred days. I think that that's the slide that we tried to share, is that lots of districts are seeing lots of these types of behaviors. My hope would be that as kids get more acclimated and settled in the school, and then schools realize the work that they have to do, that you would see growth by the next time that we produce these metrics, which is on a quarterly basis. And what I would say is that if we don't see growth, that we have the ability now to dial in on, is it a set of schools? Right, when the N size is 47, right, and I think that was one of the, you know, we're at 47 or 100, you know, which school, it could be that maybe there's a few schools where there's challenges going on that we could dial in and really drive supports to. And it may not be a systemic issue, but I think that the thing that I'm most proud of is now we can do that, we can look into that, right? I think that... I think that, you know, when we used to present data, when we used to look at data, if we looked at it at all, it was at the end of the year. And it was more of an autopsy than a diagnosis, so you could do something about it. So I believe we have the tools in place. You know, my hope would be by this time, the next, the next reporting. And Jonathan, is that December? December? We have, we have a timeline that we've created to communicate with our SACS. My hope is in that discipline, you would see reductions in discipline and hopefully reductions in disproportionality.
Lisa, I mean, okay. I think Katie's next.
I have, also want to ask a question about the behavioral supports. So I see we're comparing to last school year, which was not a typical school year. And I'm curious if we look back a year before, when kids were in school every day, or almost every day, what the comparison is with this year. And I'm not trying to downplay the fact that we clearly have had some discipline problems. And, you know, as Rob has said, it's, you know, it's not just us, it's everywhere. But I'm wondering how representative the numbers from the 2021 school district, uh, school year are, considering that they were in, you know, weren't in school all day, all the time.
Yeah, that makes complete sense that you would ask that question. And while we didn't represent that longer span of time, we can certainly provide that data. My understanding is that some of these practices have been progressing and were not in place, you know, past last year. And so we can, we can provide data on what we do have. And I'm not sure if it, if we had these practices at every school. But you ask a question that has been on, I think, our minds also about a comparison to a year when some kids weren't in school, many kids weren't in school, and some weren't in school five days a week.
But I would say there's limits, right? Because remember, two years ago, each school was setting up their own discipline code. And we don't know if they were reporting true numbers or not, right? So when we present information to the community, to the public, you, you need to know that there's been quality control around the information. And even though last year to this year was different, I believe that we had, we were having these vortex meetings, we had changed the discipline matrix and we changed the code. So if you start going back too far, it's, it won't be an apples-to-apples comparison. There might be a way where we could look at, I mean, we could look at whatever. I just don't know that it was being reported. I don't know that the expectation had been set. And it may, so you might get a false negative because two years ago, maybe they, we were telling kids just stay home, or they weren't being coded as such. Every single interaction is now being coded because, as you saw, we feel like an uptick in, while it's, it would, it would present as a negative in the discipline incidents. But if a kid gets the opportunity to participate in a restorative circle, right? You know, these are practices that we're implementing to hopefully reduce the recidivism in suspensions that for those who've worked in schools, 10% of the kids typically account for 90% of the discipline issues and suspensions, right? So that's why something like restorative justice, restorative circles, you know, things that make a deep impact and difference, where kids may, may have an incident, but the idea that they're repeating those incidences would be, you know, what our theory of action would be, that we would hope that those things would, would reduce. So a great question. Think there's limitations on the data passed last year. Jonathan, would you say that's accurate?
Yes, I would, I would say, I would say, I would say that. And I observe that, that one of the advantages of looking at data in terms of the proportionality is while it's true that last year wasn't an ordinary year for attendance, you can, you can look still at the discipline that happened and asked how proportional was all that? You know, and that for the improvements we saw from a previous year, knowing we have concerns about previous year data and didn't deem fit to put up a previous year, basically, 1920 slide, the things that we saw, we thought were patterns worth looking at, which made us all the more concerned over what we saw this fall.
Thank you, that makes sense.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay.
So along this same line of questioning, I just, I'm on slide 23, where we had compared last year's to this year's behavioral supports. And Rob, I'm wondering, because it's looking like we have a ways to go still on our disproportionality, what other kinds of supports are you considering? Are these the only ones? I mean, I'm guessing that there's other ones we're not measuring. Are there ones that we can measure to show that we're, we're moving?
Can we pull up slide 23?
There it is, that one.
So these would be the codes, right, that we'd be able to measure? I think that the present, now I wasn't here, but the presentation you heard around the differing layers of mental health supports certainly can help with that. I think that for incidences that would be a referral to the office, you know, I think that, you know, restorative interventions has the most promise. I also think training, you know, as we begin to try to continue to train and prepare our teachers to be culturally responsive and building those relationships with students, I think that you would see benefits from some of the professional development that we're doing. And then furthermore, I think that as kids become more successful academically, they become less disruptive in classrooms. I mean, so it's hard to answer is there one thing? I think it's all of the things. You know, welcoming supportive culture along with, you know, kids being more successful academically. I mean, I just look at, I look at Sanchez as an example, right? And we, and, and the Sanchez story, the story that's being written is one not only I think our community should take, take notice of. I think that schools, especially schools that weren't turned around across the state should be paying attention to. Right? Remember, when in 2018, Alicia Sanchez was one of the lowest performing schools in the state of Colorado, right? And we've done really, really solid work. And when I know that we've made our visits there, the biggest thing that they first addressed was some of the discipline and tracking the data and supporting those students, you know, providing them a board-certified behavior analyst, providing them those supports. And you're starting to see that, in addition to the data-driven instruction, really creating an environment where if we went to Sanchez unannounced tomorrow, it would be night and day from the school that we visited in 2018, right? And so I think that I'm so proud of Sanchez because it is, I think, a signal of hope for all of our other schools as we implement lots of, of the initiatives that we have within our strategic plan around infrastructure, instructional model, how do you use assessment, how do you use tiered, multi-tiered systems of support, and how that can work. So, long answer to a short question. I do think that there's lots of things that go into this. And I don't know that there's one single thing. It's not an if then, if I do this, then this is going to happen. I think it's a combination.
So to follow up on that, Rob, what does the training look like? I know we now have a restorative justice coordinator. So will there be like one teacher in every school that gets trained? I mean, how, how are we going to be operationalizing that, to use Richard's term, or implementing that? What does that look like so that we know what to look for in the future?
I think what would make sense would be to plan a deeper session. Our, you know, our restorative justice expert started yesterday, right? So we want, we want to allow her to kind of catch up with the work and get a plan together. But I think that would be a great presentation to this board and our community to see how we're changing our practices and what the expectation would be for parents and for kids.
And to address one of our board members' concerns, when we don't have SROs, the impact, the positive impact that these changes are having on our community and on the outcomes that we're having for our students. So I look forward to that presentation.
Yeah, no, I think that makes a ton of sense.
And then I just have a question about the hiring. If we could look at those slides. So my understanding is we are one of the latest districts out in the market. And so I'm wondering if I'm reading these slides correctly. We, I'm looking at slide 11, I think it is. We moved up two leaders and seven teachers in a year. Is that right? Am I reading that right?
Right, right. Well, when we're, when we're looking at this based on half, halftime jobs or higher, yes.
So we, and a one percentage point increase. So we still have a long ways to go.
We do.
And, and Rob, I hope we'll look at our timing of getting into the job market because I really do think, what I hear from principals across the district is we are one of the latest out into the market. And I don't think that gives us the opportunity to showcase ourselves to the, you know, to a broader population of potential candidates of color. So I just hope that we can have a presentation later on that. I don't expect to have an answer right now on that. But I think that might help us address this. Moving our one percentage point increase up to maybe something in the low double digits would be nice to see.
Well, I do think that, you know, over the course of several years, we have made gains. I think that, you know, Kathy, what you're referring to are the systems and structures. And that, you know, if we want to get earlier to market to be able to recruit and attract high-quality leaders and teachers of color, what will that take? And then how does that impact budget and projecting, right? And I think that the earlier you open positions up, right? I think that the bigger of a risk that you can overhire, especially in a district into declining enrollment, I think that's the balance that we're going to work to strike. But I do believe, you know, to the, where there is opportunity to do that, that that is a strategy that can help us, for sure.
And I'm just particularly interested in it because I think we have a couple very key principal positions opening up this spring. And so I'm just hoping that we look at our timing and how we look at the hiring practices around those really key positions.
Definitely.
But the news on Sanchez is super exciting. So thank you to everybody that's working really hard there. I'm excited to see the growth continue. And, and I think you, you said, Rob, we might even go off of the, we might move up a tier, which would be really exciting in our, on our status with the state.
The growth is there. There may be a nuance on percentage testing that prevents the state from recognizing that. Either way, you can't take anything away from the teachers, the leadership, district leadership. As a reminder, board members, we have district leadership. Our area SOBs, executive directors are in that school every week and are helping guide and direct. It's just, it's, it's certainly a signal of hope and a proof point on the things that we are doing. When you follow the research, when you bring in great external partners, when you have teachers buy into a vision, and when they change and embrace and change practice, amazing things can happen.
And I agree, Rob. I just hope our public, that we're, earlier during public comment, were critical of maybe our approach to certain situations in high schools will pay attention that we now have a Title IX coordinator, a restorative justice coordinator, and that we take all of these issues very seriously and we work very hard to resolve them.
Okay. Other, Richard?
Yeah, I, I had a question also on the slide 23. When you look at the behavioral supports are on the increase, the numbers that we have there, 2021, you have 170, 2022, 276 in terms of restorative interventions, interventions. Is that for all populations? Do you have desegregated data as it relates to kids of color? As it relates to restorative interventions? And all the others?
I think we can access, we have the systems now. If, if board members wanted specific data dives into those things, we could certainly look to do that. In, in regards to, for this presentation, we felt like it was looking at these things holistically. But we can certainly, whatever board members are interested in.
Well, I, for one, I'm definitely interested in it. And, and I think it's a result of the, of the revised discipline policy that we put in place way back when. And it appears to, to, to me that, that it is providing better guidance to schools and all of that as it relates to the reporting aspect of discipline. So I, for one, would like to see how it relates to the kids of color or the students of color as it relates to some of the supports that we have here. And also how it relates to the increase, or the increase of the disproportionality of, of discipline. So, yeah, you know, I would like to see that. I'm not sure about the rest of the board, but I know I would. And then, and then when you talk about parent conferences, what does that mean?
So typically, a parent conference as, as a result is we bring the parents in and we talk to them about what happened as, as an intervention, right? Like it's a, it's a parent meeting. And those, those, I think, I mean, that's the premise of what a parent conference is. You bring parents in, hey, here's what's going on, here's what can't happen anymore, really trying to partnership with parents. As opposed to calling parents in and saying, hey, we're, you know, here's the consequence your kid got. It's, hey, let's talk about it. Let's figure out, you know, what's going on? How can we work together to support, to support your student?
Is that in addition to the entry conferences that the schools have with kids after they're suspended? Because our parents are requested to be at those particular conferences.
Yeah, no, no, my, my belief is that a parent conference would be, if, if a student got suspended, we wouldn't be counting a parent conference in there as well. That's my understanding, that these are not within the incidence, that these aren't multiple. But we can, we can double-check on that.
And what are the warning conferences?
I, I, I think it's a warning.
Well, I know, I know it speaks for itself, but I mean, you know, what would it look like?
Well, a warning conference versus a parent's conference might be, if this happens again, this is the consequence you're going to get. But, you know, we can get, we can get more specifics on that. I think that the, that the purpose of this slide is that, is that we're meeting with kids, trying to counsel them to change behavior, as opposed to providing exclusionary discipline, which takes kids away from instruction, which is counterintuitive to every single thing we're trying to do.
Got it, thank you. Now, if you go back to the hiring slide, which is, which one is it? It's at the very beginning. Well, anyway, I can't find it now. But it's the one that talks about nearly all candidate folders. What does that mean, nearly all candidate folders have POCs and?
So, so if a school posts a position, they, board members, as, as a reminder, it used to be several years ago, before anyone could be, could be considered for a position, they had to go through a, a survey, right? That we had questions about. We felt like it was limiting the, our, our quality teachers of color from actually getting into those folders. So we eliminated that teacher in sight. Do you all remember this? We had this conversation. We were spending $50,000. The problem that the district was trying to solve at one point is they had too many candidates to look at. So you could create a, a measure to kind of try to weed those things out, based on research. But what we found is that by doing that, it limited our candidates of color. And so over the course of the past several years, what you've seen is that in any folder, if I'm a hiring manager, I'm hiring a teacher, hiring a principal, that 98% of the time, that, that somebody was hiring someone, there was a person of color that was qualified to consider for the role, which is a big improvement. And then when you go to the next slide, that, that equated to a 56% increase where people of color were interviewed. Right? Like, you know, you know, as we, and we've talked about this kind of opportunity to growth to achievement. I think, you know, so when you get the right candidates in the folder, more of them interview, you, and then when you go to the next slide, slide seven, that there's a 30% increase in our new hires where a person of color was hired. You know, it, it's going to take time for that to increase the ratio and disproportionality because you also have to remember, every year, we have people come and go, right? So while our hiring is more promising, you know, 30% is, is not enough, right? We need to continue to accelerate that, you know, to 40%, 50%. So then you could start to accelerate that, you know, to 40%, 50%. So then, you could start moving that bottom line, right? Because when we're talking about proportionality, we're trying to, we have a long way to go. We just have a long way to go. So I think that these are signs of hope, that we're changing the systems and structures that are going to allow that to happen over time.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate that. When I saw nearly all candidate folders, and VSC continued to include people of color, what struck me in terms of that, just the comment of nearly all, are there positions that don't include people of color?
I'll let Mike speak to that. I think there's positions where we haven't, where we haven't had people of color apply.
And could you let me know, like, what kind of positions those are?
Well, Board Member Garcia, here's how that works when we say nearly. One of the, one of the biggest challenges we have is finding the people of color to apply. So that has been one of the biggest challenges, and when we can get most of our folders that have people of color, we're doing a better job of it, and we're not, we're just not doing recruiting fairs. We're actually talking to individuals. We're partnering with, with lots of the institutions throughout, throughout the United States that have at least 75% or greater of candidates of color. So when we, when we ask them to apply, we talk to them to apply, they come in, we can put them in the folder because they meet the minimum requires, requirements. Now, some of those positions could be ranged from, from all of our content area, our four content areas, math, science, social studies, but they can also be art, they can also be foreign language. So, we look for all of those, and even though we went through the pandemic, we were not able to attend fairs, we did a lot of virtual ones. And the virtual ones were, oh, I wouldn't say they were, they weren't as satisfying as I thought they would be, because a lot of people at that time did not want to make a move because of that pandemic. They were more secure where they were. So now, as we're approaching this year, we're hoping that we can make that a better way to get to increase people in the folders, but also hiring people more. And to Board Member Gephardt's point, you know, if we can get out earlier by talking to these people and anticipate those openings, because we did offer, we did offer contracts before we even had the positions, and that's risky, but we did, and we were able to place a lot of them. So, we hope, this is, again, this is, this is one, it's been one thing, and I think I came back, it was a couple months ago, I think I told you that, in the, in the three years, we hired 63 people of color, so that percentage bounced to about 30%. But, but it is, it is, it's a phenomenon that we're continuing to work on, and we'll make improvements and keep it going.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Lisa?
When we're talking about the hiring statistics, I think one thing that stood out to me, so it looks like we're at nearly 100% of candidate folders had a person of color, but then only 2/3 of jobs interviewed a person of color. I'm wondering if there is more information you can give around that. Is it, how many people on average are we interviewing for positions? Is this referring to people we asked for an interview, or for people who actually came to interview, or what sort of information do we have that explains why 33% of our open positions aren't interviewing anyone other than a white person?
Yeah, and that's something we're continuing to work on, those who are in the folders. We, we make an emphasis within that folder, when we give to each principal, it's in bold letters. You have in your folder five people of color, and we list their names. That's how specific we get, to make the urgency to say to principals, you really need to interview them, and they're getting interviewed. What happens, what happens is sometimes the candidates will drop out. They, you know, they're in the folder, but then all of a sudden, they drop out and they don't interview. So that's what might be that figure, that nearly all, is that all of them get interviewed because they either drop, you know, okay? Or, and the thing is, is that I think principals are starting to really see the urgency, because I think we're going to start to see the increase. We're starting to see the pattern. As Dr. Anderson alluded to earlier, it's a good, it's a good trend that we're starting to see, and it's starting to get better. And I think we'll get better this year because we're not going to be doing most of these recruiting fairs virtually. They will be in person.
And I will say that you, you improved this, because we do have this data, as a reminder, not just that. Oh, sorry. Is that better? We do have this data, not only at the district level, but at the school level as well, that we're presenting to school advisory councils and principals, and as executive directors are looking at the disproportionality of teachers of color versus students of color in their building.
Yes.
Right? We're at a place now where that becomes very real, and they have to see this multiple times a year. Remember, I mean, these are very complicated issues, but which, and most of the districts in the front range are trying to do the exact same thing we are doing.
Exactly.
So, so there is competition, right? To Kathy's point earlier, how do we get to market first, you know, as, as something that will help us? So I would say that, you know, you'll see improvement, I would say, as we move forward over the next multiple years. You're going to see schools doing this very well, and then, when the schools aren't making progress, then I think, Lisa, to the questions you're asking, that's the time to sit down with the school and ask them about their hiring practices. Do they interview two people? Do they interview 10 people? Do they continue to look, right? You know, is, you know, how are they changing their internal hiring practices? Are they putting together committees, right, that are not, are not weighing the importance of having of teachers and of color or staff of color, right? So I think that systemically, we've created some systems and structures, but the way that you'll solve this, just like the way we'll solve a lot of these problems, is by digging to the school level, providing the expectation support. But, but board members, we will know, and the public will know, right? Because we can break this down by school, and that is how, now that we have the systems and structures and expectations, we've moved teacher insight, we look at getting to market first, we have competitive wages, we're able to start to go out and begin to do some of these recruitings, and whether it's recruiting from neighboring districts or from other, from, from the university system, you know, I just think that, that we have the tools now to really dial in, understand where we're getting it done and not getting it done, and shining a light where we need to get better.
I appreciate that. I would love to see, ideally, the next time we see this chart, some more specific information on exactly those things. How many people are we interviewing on average? What's the difference? Is there a statistically significant difference between the people to whom we're extending interview offers and those who are actually being interviewed, and which does that represent, et cetera? I think it would be illuminating.
We can do that, absolutely. We can keep that data.
Richard?
Just quickly, I know that in the past, we were, we used to do school profiles. I don't know if you all recall that, people have been here for a long time, where actually gave that information as it relates to teachers of color versus the number of kids that are there, as it relates to students of color, et cetera. So how soon do you think we'll be able to start seeing that, those school profiles, or whatever you want to call them?
We can dial into each and every school today, right? To the extent that we create an end-of-the-year profile, we'd have to have more conversation on what that would be used for and why we would do that. I mean, I think that Jonathan and his team went to great lengths to develop some of the dashboard looks that you all have seen over time, really focused on disproportionality, because we really felt like that aligned to where we're trying to get in regards to our strategic plan. But we have valid, reliable data at the school level that we can look at at any point in time, and furthermore, principals can look at, and school advisory councils can look at, as they work together to try to figure this out. And so, no longer are the days of, you know, everything's an ad hoc report, where you have to ask for something and it takes, like, we have this information in real time, and, and we're presenting it transparent, transparently. The next step is that Jonathan will be, will be generating PDFs of this disproportionality data to, and providing that to our school advisory councils, as they begin to review the data. And I will have to tell you, our district accountability committee has been just incredibly helpful in developing this, and is fully supportive, and I think the comments are, for the first time, we really feel like we have the information we need as we think about budget and other priorities in the school in regards to improvement.
Yeah, and we'll be, we're working, we're working really late in the moment on the question of the best technology. So they will either be PDFs that look a little bit, that are more accessible to people with vision and pyramid, or we'll be putting up something that's actually more interactive, but we're hoping for the next month and a half-ish, when that can be seen in a more public way and not just within BVSD, which can be done today by administrators.
Okay. Well, shall we move on to our next item?
I had a comment.
Oh, okay, Donna. Yeah.
Yeah, had my hand up for a while. Even though we have competitive wages, I think it's difficult for a lot of people, and I know of two in particular, that I encouraged to apply here, and they said, are you kidding? You know, the cost of living there is so high, and even if I were to drive an hour each way, the cost of gas now is just all consuming. So those are other factors that BVSD can't quite control, but it, there are people that want to work here and that I've encouraged to apply, but there's other factors that inhibit them from, from even wanting to be here. The other thing I wanted to comment on is that, as I saw the slide presentation, I had a conversation today with not only a few teachers, but a few subs, and, and I think not only are students struggling to be back in time, in school full-time, but so are our teachers. As we know, that Friday is quite the day that we're paying double for people because we need so many subs, and even subs are having to double up on their load. They're not covering just one teacher, but several. And a sub today told me of an incident in a classroom where she said that the students were being quite disrespectful. If you asked them to put up, for example, their cellphone, they were saying, no. And when they were said, yeah, you need to do that, they just walked out of the room. I think that, that is indicative of what, of our kids being out of school for 18 months. They've been used to playing a game on another device, or, or just putting their name on and sleeping in their bed. It's a process, and I, and I'm thankful that Rob said that maybe the next semester, as they get used to being in school, that, that their respect for the teachers will fall into place, and for the subs that are covering. But our teachers also need those supports, because five days a week of dealing with discipline issues is quite demanding on, on them. They're coming back to a situation that is a lot different than what they left 18 months ago. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Rob? No? Okay, great. Our next item are the revisions to board policy exhibit ACE1, which is our non-discrimination and equal opportunity notice. Kathleen is not with us tonight, so Jim Brand, Brown, could you give us an overview, or, or Rob?
I'm happy to, to give a very quick overview.
Perfect.
As, as this is an exhibit, board members, you know that as an information item, we have to notify the board for any changes 30 days before implementation, and this policy exhibit was, was just updated to reflect that we'd have, that we're using our equity council and our Title IX coordinator that were positions that we didn't have. So those, no substantial changes to those adjustments.
Any questions about the change?
Yeah, I have a question based, that this can't be implemented for 30 days. So if there is a complaint between October 23rd, or, yeah, and, and between now and then, they have to go to the prior coordinator? Let's say there's a Title IX-
So there's, there's, I think that, you know, we would take that on a case-by-case basis, Kitty. I think that, you know, in the spirit of, of this board policy was to make sure that we didn't make significant changes without informing the board of their implementation on practice. You know, this is a little bit different in the sense that it changes the compliance officer, right? It changes the compliance officer from Kathleen to Elizabeth Francis, who's our new Title IX coordinator. And then, and that's for both employees and for students. And that's, that's the, if you, if you go into the, that's the only change, right? So to the extent that Kathleen would be the official person until, until these 30 days were up, I think we would take that on a case-by-case basis. I think Liz is going to be doing a lot of the work, but she, it's also going to take her some time to get up to speak to.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this? Again, we're not taking action, just information. Okay, great. Our next item is a legislative update. Does anyone have anything? Kathy?
Wouldn't you be disappointed if I said no? I'm kidding. Two quick things. The interim school finance committee meets next Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, I'll have to look, but it's always informative to listen in on those conversations. And as I think many of us know, there's a Tabor surplus coming up, and so there's going to be no shortage of ideas about how to spend that money and what to put on the ballot. One that I think we should follow is kind of a update to Amendment 23, which would increase the amount of money that is taken out of the state income tax to try to pay back the negative factor. And so there's actual language being drafted around that, and they're looking at an actual ballot measure next year to try to use some of that surplus to pay back the, I don't know what we're going to call it in the next couple of years, but the BS factor, the negative factor, whatever. So I'll be happy to give more information as we go along on that, but I just thought I would give those two pieces of information.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So our next item are our action item consent grouping. I'm going to read the list of items. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, September 28th, 2021, Special Meeting Executive Session, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, September 28th, 2021, Regular Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, University Hill Elementary, 7.5 Colorado Preschool Program Agency Agreements, 7.6 MOU Mental Health Partners for Healthion Services, 7.7 Out of District Placement Agreements. Are there any items board members would like to pull? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion to approve these items? By Kathy, and second by Kitty. Any questions or comments about the motions? Kathy?
I just want to draw attention to the out-of-district costs. Again, it's just another example of how underfunded our special education system is and how Boulder Valley steps up to serve all of its students regardless of the need. And I just think when you see those numbers and you realize just how much it costs to serve those students, it's pretty eye-opening. So we're doing the right thing, but I think we need to continue the pressure on our state to continue to increase the funding for special education.
Okay. All right. I'd certainly agree with that, Kathy. Okay. Laura, would you mind calling the roll on the items for action, the action items?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zuss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our final item are, is agenda setting. Is there anything people want to put on? Kathy?
Two things. I want to take Rob up on his offer on the restorative justice update at some point, whenever the timing is right on that. And Rob, when you weren't here, I had asked about maybe getting an update on the impact of having the counselors in our elementary schools and counselors, increase in counselors that we've had, the positive impact it's had. Because we had a report on that when we first implemented it, and it was really helpful to see the positive impact. And I know we have a much greater need than we're able to meet, but maybe if we can talk about that, we can try to figure out when we're doing budget setting, if there's any additional support that we can give in that area. So those are my two requests for agenda.
Okay. Richard?
Also, Rob, when we heard the mental health presentation, we heard a lot of great information around mental health and- around mental health and social, emotional layers of support that we have. One of the things that I would like to see us consider is a policy on mental health. And I made that announcement, or not announcement, but comment during my, my time when they were making that presentation. I'd like to follow up on that.
All right. For our next prioritization meeting. It'd been good if someone wanted to research whether other districts have done that, you might want to take a look.
I did a little bit, and there's none.
Okay. There you go. All right. Anything else, board members? All right. Can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Stacy, second by Kitty. Laura, would you please call the vote?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Motion passes.